Go ahead and start the recording, Z.
Hit it, Z. Um, good evening. Welcome to the, uh, October meeting of Niskuna's Zone Board of Appeals. Uh, Ms. uh, Shiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Mr. Trymarki?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Helios?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. The first, uh, matter on the agenda is a review of the minutes from, uh, the September meeting, September 17th meeting. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Having heard no discussion, is there anybody that would wish to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion?
We do.
Just for this one. Uh, so moved, Mr. Chair.
Uh, I have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh.
We should be able to second the motion. You just can't vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, Mr. Dolman made the motion. Mr. Latif, did you second that motion?
Uh, I'll second it, but I originally also made the motion.
Okay. All right, a motion's been made and seconded. Um, well, I just remind the members that I believe that only myself, Mr. Latif, Mr. Dolman, and Mr. Trymarki were present for that meeting. Um, will you, uh, call the roll, Ms. Shiketti?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Mr. Trymarki?
Yes.
Should I read the two that are gonna abstain?
I know you guys would abstain, but yeah, you still need to read them.
Mr. Helios?
Abstain.
Mr. Daly?
Abstain.
And Chairperson Hope?
Yes. Okay. Um, moving on, can we, uh, call the first matter on the agenda for this evening?
Appeal by Michael Tierney for a variance from section 220-18A3 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at Glen Eddy, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a pavilion exceeding the height limit for accessory structures. Section 220-18A3 states unless otherwise specified, accessory structures shall not exceed 15 feet in height. As proposed, a pavilion is 21 feet 6 inches in height. Therefore, a variance of 6 feet 6 inches is required. Eighty-two notices were mailed, zero responses. We received a county referral and a planning board recommendation.
Um, Schenectady County deferred to local consideration. And the planning board on September 8th made the following recommendations. Effect on the comprehensive plan, the planning board voted 7-0 that the proposed variance had no effect on the comprehensive plan. Suitability of use, the board voted 7-0 that the proposed variance was a suitable use. They noted the site at 1 Glen Eddy Drive is self-contained and the pavilion will be located behind the building and cannot be seen by neighbors. They stated that a concrete pad already exists at the proposed pavilion site and there is no impact on utilities. The board also recognized that a tall area outdoor open open outdoor area sheltered from sun and rain is a desirable use of land at the site. The planning board voted 7-0 to recommend that the zoning board of appeals grant the variance as written.
Uh, thank you. Uh, sir, can you state your name and, uh, address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Michael Tierney. Address is 315 South Manning Boulevard, Albany, New York. I work for St. Peter's Health Partners, which is the parent company of Glen Eddy. I'm here to represent and talk about the project and answer any questions, but if I, if I could, I'll just give a brief background.
Before we get there, can we do those six?
Oh, yeah. One, two, three, four. You only have six?
Yeah.
All right, uh, we have six members. My, uh, math was off. So just so you know, um, you're entitled to a seven, it's a seven-member board. You're entitled to have a full board present. Uh, because you only have six members, you still need four affirmative votes out of the seven to get your variance approved. Um, you could elect to, uh, uh, adjourn the matter to the next meeting, uh, at which point hopefully we would have seven members. Um, if you elect to go forward today, um, then we'd like to know that at the outset because these are the people that would be hearing your application as opposed to next week, it would be a different, uh, potentially a different, uh, group of people.
Okay.
So do you wish to move forward or do you wish to adjourn? There, there's no cost associated with waiting.
Do I have to decide that right now or could I go through the case?
Uh, no, because, because we're gonna hear the matter. Everybody's gonna hear it. Everybody that's present is gonna hear it. We, we'd rather you that let us know now or elect to adjourn.
Okay, I will go forward with it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Why don't you go, why don't you tell us about the, the project?
Absolutely. So as you know, Glen Eddy opened in 2001. It's a retirement community, independent living, assisted living. In the independent living, that's the, the, uh, portion of the facility where folks come and go. They drive a car. They, they're completely mobile. And what we've had since we opened, uh, 22 years ago, 23 years ago, is we've had a seasonal tent in the back uh, that we put up every year and then we take it down about this time of the year. Uh, we have that and use that for outdoor activities, uh, during the spring, summer, and fall. Uh, dinners, entertainment, things of that nature. Uh, we've always had the intent of, of building a permanent structure. So here we are, fast forward 23 years later. We have the funding in place, uh, and we want to build the structure. So we have a design and, and as Laura read through, it's, uh, a height of, of 21 and a half feet, uh, for the roof line. And that was really just to match the existing buildings. Uh, of course, this is Glen Eddy. It's a retirement home. This is where people live. We want to have a nice structure. We want to have something that blends in with the rest of the, of the community. So that's the reason why we, we built, um, a 20, 21-foot roof. As she said, it's on an existing structure right now. We, we're gonna reuse that, um, concrete structure. It's gonna be the same size. It's gonna be essentially the same dimensions. Uh, it's just a permanent structure where we'll, we'll take away the seasonal tent and our intent is to build a permanent structure.
Mr. Tierney, uh, so what I understand is you have a concrete slab there now, correct, that the, uh, uh, tent currently sits on? How high is the current tent?
The current tent is about 18 feet right now.
Okay. Well, why do we need it to be 21.5 feet? Have we, uh, examined whether we could make the tent, uh, uh, have a li- lower height?
We did examine a couple of different things when, when we talked to planning, uh, went back to the architecture and the design team and they felt, uh, that the higher peaked roof would be better just for water runoff. We're gonna tie into, uh, the existing, uh, sewer system and, and just felt it was, it was a better, better use of space, just a better design. Going better, going in better with the rest of the community, so.
In, in front of the, uh, in front of the, uh, from the road, can you see the structure? Will you be able to see it?
No.
Okay. How about, um, in behind, do you have neighbors behind you?
Not a bad section. We have neighbors be- behind us and, and in the west wing. So there's really no visibility from any of the roadways, any of the neighbors, uh, and that structure at all. It's really, um, trees have matured, so there's a host of trees, plus the, the, the grade is, it's pitched a little bit higher than the road, so uh, the visibility is, is, is zero.
And, and it sounded to me that you had already contemplated a, a water mitigation system to mitigate the runoff, uh, off of the, uh, structure?
Exactly. We have a, uh, a 24-inch stone area where we have, uh, underground drainage and everything will tie into existing catch basin. So we're gonna catch all that water. We're gonna pull all that water away, away from the building.
No one, uh, to your knowledge has expressed any opposition to this, uh, this project?
Yeah.
Okay.
The residents are, are strongly in favor of this. This is a, a big step for them and they're very excited to see it hopefully moving forward, so it's.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, thank you for answering my questions. I'm gonna open it up to the, uh, other members of the board. They may have questions. Anyone?
Mr. Hope, just, uh, quick question, sir. Uh, this is Mr. Latif. Uh, you said this is a seasonable, uh, tent you guys put up? And, uh, the question for you, what would you use it in the winter for?
For the, the winter months, it would not be used at all. Um, it would just, we would, we would most likely keep our outdoor furniture there and it would just be stored there, but there's, it's, it's open, open side, so there's no, no purpose to use it. There's inclement weather would, would not, would not be useful to use it.
Okay, so basically, uh, instead of taking it down every year and putting it back up, it will stay there and, uh, and that will be, uh, used to just keep the furniture under it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hope. Thank you, sir.
A- any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Tierney, what's the material made out of?
So it's steel columns, uh, wood, wood, wood trusses, and then a, a metal roof. Well, PVC trim. It's gonna be trimmed out just to, to blend in with the building. Architecturally, very, very nice building that'll, pavilion that'll, that will be, um, blend in nicely with the building.
Very good. Thanks.
Are there any other, uh, questions?
Just a point of clarification either from Laura or Elena. Um, looking at the, the application, just to be clear, this is, this is only an area variance, right? It's not a use variance?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Uh, I'm, I'm a little bit confused as to why it needs to be higher than what's allowed. Like, if it was lower, what benefit would you not be able to achieve?
We would not be able to achieve just the, the, the peaked roof was really the design that the architect and the design team was going after. And throughout the building, we have, we have peaked roofs. Uh, so that's really what they were trying to continue right through, right through the building, or right through the campus.
So the reason you want it higher with the peaked roof is in order to have it, have the design fit in better with the rest of the facility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tierney, I, I also thought you had referenced that the peaked roof assists with the water remediation efforts as well. Is that correct?
That is also correct, too. That's okay, snow and, and rain, rainwater would shed off the building a lot quicker and into our, to our system, so.
Okay. Uh, are there any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hope, uh, just a quick one. There was a mention, I think, about having, uh, some kind of fan inside. Is that true?
Yes, that is correct. There would be two ceiling-mounted fans inside that we would use just in, in hot days to, to, to move some air in the space.
Okay, and what's the height on those fans? And is, is, uh, the heights require anything to do with higher ceilings or?
Um, yeah, perhaps. That, that, that's a very good point. I may have overlooked that. Um, the height of the building, the ceiling structure is 9'6", so that the fans, I think, are gonna drop down, I think it's just about 18 inches. So, um, you know, that, that would give us an eight-foot, eight-foot clearance space, which, uh, affords us enough space to have activities and.
So what would be the heights from the ground to the fan, if you, if you know?
Eight feet, eight feet.
Eight feet? Okay, okay. So that make, makes sense that nobody, hopefully nobody over eight feet walks in there. All right, thank you again.
Yes, of course.
Uh, are there any other questions? Having heard no other questions, is there anyone who wishes to make a motion, um, relative to this application?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't know if anybody wants to speak against it, but, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having, having heard no one in the audience be, uh, there's no one, uh, there's not too many people present, but, um, it sounds like there is no one in the audience that wishes to be heard for or against this application. So, Mr. Latif, do you wish to be heard on this application?
Yes, I, uh, I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. Chairman, uh, to approve, uh, this variance. Uh, the Glen Eddy, uh, looks like, uh, they've been using this, uh, uh, tent for over many years. And finally, uh, they had, uh, the funds to be able to make it, uh, a study in the building. And it looks like, uh, uh, the heights different. It will help mitigate some of the water problems that, uh, usually we have with a lot of applications. And it looks like, uh, they have a good design and it's not gonna be, uh, uh, causing any damages. Uh, and as was mentioned before, uh, nobody can see it from the road. Uh, it is, uh, in some ways, uh, uh, self-created. Again, they had the stand, uh, for over 20 years and it looks like finally they're able to, uh, make it permanent. And, uh, for all these reasons, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna approve it.
A motion to approve the, uh, variance has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
A motion's been made and seconded. Uh, Ms. Shiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm gonna vote yes. Uh, I find that the benefit cannot be achieved by other means because a peak roof is necessary for proper shedding water. And the extra height, uh, allows for the benefit of having air circulation in a, uh, facility that's gonna be largely inhabited by or used by seniors. Uh, I don't find that there's an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The structure, uh, can't be seen from the road and the design seems to blend with the existing buildings. I do find that this is a substantial request. Um, I don't see any re- reason that there would be an environmental impact. The only real issue could be drainage and it would appear that the applicant has properly addressed that issue. Um, and I do find that this is self-created. However, that on its own is not determinative. And on the balance, I vote yes.
Mr. Trymarki?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Helios?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your, uh, variance has been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the project.
Great, thanks.
Thanks. This, uh, Shiketti, we call the next matter on the agenda.
Appeal by Emily Schusis for a variance from section 220-18B3 and section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1366 Myron Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a 24-foot by 24-foot garage partially within the side setbacks for the two-side yard and rear yard. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be, shall be the same as applies to the principal building. Major accessory structures are defined as detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The garage at 576 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a 15-foot side yard setback and a 20-foot rear yard setback. As proposed, the garage will be nine feet from one side property line, four feet from the other side property line, and four feet from the rear property line. Therefore, a six-foot side yard setback variance, an 11-foot side yard setback variance, and a 16-foot rear yard setback variance are required. Fifteen notices were mailed, zero responses.
Yes, hi, how are you this evening?
Good, I'm good. Before you can even ask, I would elect to move forward.
Okay, before we even get to that, could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Emily Schusis and I really appreciate that she got it right. Um, I know it's a tough one. And I do reside at 1366 Myron Street and the code is 12309. You did.
Uh, uh, you heard my spiel originally and, uh, I under- I understand that you wish to move forward with the sixth person, uh, board this evening. Okay, um, why don't you tell us a little bit about your project?
So in June of last year, I had the misfortune of a giant silver maple falling on top of my garage and crushing it. So the structure, it was a single-car garage with an attached carport. Um, so it was a complete loss. It had to be, um, just hauled out of there. It was essentially shattered to smithereens. Um, so in rebuilding, I talked to some of my neighbors. Um, a couple of them have, uh, two-car garages and they said that with the minimal cost of building a two-car garage versus replacement with the, um, single-car garage and a carport, they encouraged me to get, get a two-car garage. So that's kind of the direction I would like to move into. Um, my property is only 40 feet wide, so there's really no way to construct it in conformance with, uh, uh, current setbacks. Um, and given that since the original, um, the original single-car garage was put in there, which was in 1930 when the house was built, since then, trees have matured around it. A couple fences have gone up. So the proposed placement will be about a foot and a half closer to my house and a foot and a half um, further from the right-hand side of my property line.
So Ms. Schusis, as you can see, uh, on the, on the screen over there, that's your property, correct?
Yes.
That was the original, um, garage that's reflected in that photograph?
I think so, yes.
Um, so I guess my question is, how much larger is the new garage versus the original garage?
The original garage was, um, 20 foot, feet in length and, um, it was a almost 22 feet wide, um, accounting for the edge of the single-car garage and then the carport. So this will be just a, a touch bigger. Um, the driveway is 22 feet wide and it won't have to be widened at all to, um, accommodate the new structure.
Are we gonna be taking down any of those mature trees you were referencing?
Um, well, the one that came down itself, another one unfortunately fell onto my house and then kicked over onto my patio roof in, uh, in March of this year.
Seems like you have a, having a run of it.
Removed, so we're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
No additional trees then?
Nope.
Okay. Um. All right, I, I mean, I, I recognize that this part of the community, the, the lots are very narrow. Um, and it sounds to me that we're basically replacing an existing relatively similar dimensions to an existing, uh, garage. Is that correct?
Yep.
Um, how old was the original garage?
Uh, about 95 years old.
So this is gonna be, uh, an improvement, um, to the character of the neighborhood?
Very much so, yes.
Okay, and in terms of functionality, you'll be able to get two vehicles as opposed to one vehicle in the garage? Um, and that's the purpose behind the second, uh, stall is to get two vehicles in there, correct? Okay, uh, I'm gonna open it up to see if anybody else has any questions. All right, are there any other members of the board that have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I got a couple of question, uh. Ms. uh, Schusis, if you can, uh, explain to me what is the plan for, uh, the drainage from the roof, et cetera? And, uh, if you have, uh, any plans, uh, on building, putting gutters in, et cetera?
Um, the, the contractor that I'm working with doesn't think that gutters will be necessary. It's my understanding that there'll be some gravel put along the periphery, kind of around the structure to facilitate some drainage. Um, I don't have gutters on my house and that's never been an issue, nor did the existing structure that came down didn't have any gutters. So I'm anticipating that the, the water, um, flow and drainage will be approximately as it was.
What, what is that? I'm sorry.
Well, how, how close is your neighbor, uh, uh, to the new garage you will be building?
Um.
And is the roof pointing to the neighbor? So with the drainage, uh, the water drain to the neighbor's, uh, uh, basement or anything like this?
Nope, the orientation of the roof will be the same and it's, the garage is located in the back corner of my property. Um, and since it's in the, essentially the same location as the old structure, we don't anticipate that there'll be any, any change to the, um.
Okay, so, so that garage for 90 years or whatever, so you never had any problem with water or drainage, right?
Um, I do get a little bit of, when we have very heavy rains, in my yard only, there's like a little patch where it kind of gets saturated and, and a puddle will form. Um, but I've talked to my neighbor Pam next door and, um, we both have French drains in our basements. We get a little bit of seepage, but there hasn't, um, it's not enough that, that causes a real issue for either of us.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Under any questions?
Just to clarify, um, so this would, this is essentially the same footprint now as the combined garage and the carport?
Yeah, just shifted, uh, a foot and a half forward and a foot and a half to the left.
Overall orientation of the structure is not gonna change from, you know, horizontal to vertical or, okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no one in the audience, is there anybody that wishes to make a motion relative to this application?
Uh, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dolman?
I would move that, uh, we approve the application as written. I find that the benefit cannot be achieved by other means. Uh, that there's really, based on this property, no place else to put a two-car garage. Uh, and I find that this is not an undesirable change in the neighborhood. In fact, it's gonna be an improvement to the neighborhood. Um, because we're gonna have a new, modern structure rather than a, a le- less modern carport.
That had seen better days.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Um, I do find, uh, I, I actually don't find that this is substantial as the previously existing structure was largely of, uh, of the same footprint. There's no environmental impact that I can tell. Uh, the only real impact would be, uh, drainage and it seems that you have had this discussion with the appropriate people. Um, and, uh, actually, I do not find that this is self-created as this is a repair from a natural disaster. And I live about two blocks from you and I know what it's like to have 100-year-old trees falling down all around you. Um, I, I hope you have a generator because they fall on the power lines, too.
Oh, I don't, but my neighbor next door does and he said I could hook in.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Um, so on the whole, uh, I would move to approve the application as written.
Uh, a motion's been made and just for clarification, the motion is made for the, both the side and rear yard, uh, setback variance is correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Uh, Ms. Shiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote, uh, yes, uh, for this, uh, garage and I think it is a big improvement. Uh, to have it, uh, built back up and it looks like, uh, the dimension's still the same. Uh, for all these reasons, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for reasons stated.
Mr. Trymarki?
Yes.
Mr. Helios?
Yes, for reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Congratulations and good luck with your project.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Have a good one. Uh, Ms. Shiketti, will you call the next matter, please?
Appeal by Patrick Cho for a variance from section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2733 Rosendale Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain a six-foot fence in the front yard exceeding the height allowed. Fence section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a six-foot high fence is located in the front yard. Therefore, two-foot fence height variance is required. Nine notices were mailed, one response, and a county referral.
Oh, I got too much. Oops, sorry. Uh, members of the zoning board of appeals, we appreciate your soliciting our opinion and those of other neighbors impacted by the six-foot solid white fence construction at the property of 2733 Rosendale Road. Here and after, sorry, here and after referred to as the subject property in contradiction to existing Niskuna zoning rules. We are concerned about the subject property fence for at least three reasons. Two involve traffic safety. Such a fence, when added to all the pre-existing driveways adjacent to and including the subject property, combined with the sharp turn on Rosendale Road just east of subject property, significantly increases driver blind spots and the probability of frequent accidents, accidents. Second, such a fence may have the unintended consequence of funneling the large deer herds and other animals that roam on all the neighboring undeveloped land and town park onto Rosendale Road and increase traffic collisions. Third, such a privacy fence alters the character of neighboring properties and reminds us of residential congestion in Long Island, New Jersey, and California properties, which we believe is inconsistent with the ideals formulated by the Niskuna zoning board. Finally, perhaps the subject property owner should explain to the zoning board of appeals why a previous line of attractive conifers in the same location was removed in favor of the fence in question. Respectfully, Patricia A. Loomis, 111 Partridge Run, Niskuna, New York. Um, the Schenectady County referral deferred to local consideration.
Will the applicant please come forward? Does not appear that the applicant is present. Um, Ms. Robertson, is there any explanation that the, has the applicant called or provided an explanation for not being present this evening?
I tried calling multiple times. No voicemail of, available. I emailed him last night. No response today.
Okay.
Cause I was gonna send him the video link if he was not able to attend.
All right. What is a typical, uh, process for, uh, alerting people to a meeting? Do, do we have, do we, do you always call people and?
I usually call on the Monday or Tuesday and ask them to respond.
I usually call on the Monday or Tuesday and ask them to respond and most of the time they do respond.
Okay, so you follow your normal processes?
Yeah, I, I called more than once because he didn't have voicemail available.
Okay, and did you say you sent an email as well?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I would just note to the board that um, even though the applicant is absent. Um, we still have to take the application based upon the information that's contained therein. Um, and uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It is, I, I think that we should probably, well, I agree with you that, you know, we have the ability to uh. To move forward based on the application as presented. Because of the unique nature tonight where we're missing folks and he does not have the ability to respond. And the fact that in the past, we've given people one strike. Uh, I would move that we table the matter uh, until the following, um, well, I'm not making a motion, let me see, I would.
So we're just having discussion now, you'd like to discuss that you, your position is to table the matter based upon. Previous practices in which we've tabled these types of matters?
Previous practice and the fact that there's an extenuating circumstance here and that we don't have a full board and he's not present to. Uh, make the decision as to whether or not he. Is willing to waive his right to a seven-member board.
I, I don't know that I, I agree with your, your perspective, uh, but I, I appreciate your right to make a uh. Uh, a motion uh, to table and uh, the.
Chairman, can you just, you had started saying how. We could move forward.
Well, I said, I.
That thought, please.
I said we could move, yeah, for the record, I said we could move forward with the application based upon the information that has been submitted in the application. I think that if we are, in other words, we can't just summarily deny the application, we have to give it due consideration. I think Mr. um, Dolman's point is that uh, he believes we should table the matter to give the applicant one more opportunity to come. Forward um, and bolster their application as most applicants do. Um, I, 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 I'm reluctant to do that for a couple of reasons. From my perspective. Um, I, I think that there, from my perspective, there's enough information contained in the application. To, to decide this matter from my perspective. I understand that other uh, other members may have a differing point of view. Um, the applicant, it looks like uh, Mr. Kenny went out of her way to try to contact the applicant. I don't know of any reason that he wasn't aware of, of the meeting this evening. Um, and I'm concerned about, you know, um, the economy of the board and, 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 and having these matters heard on the nights that they're scheduled to be heard. Absent the applicant coming forward and at least advising us why they're unable to be here tonight. So that's my perspective. Um, but again, is, if there's any other further discussion, does anybody else wish to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you on this and usually uh, if anybody on the board. Uh, unable to uh, you know, uh, that they need to ask the, the applicant for questions. Uh, and then we usually table it, but I think it's clear in this situation and uh. Uh, I think we could, uh, whatever you, the board decide, we can move forward with it.
Okay, is there any further discussion, Mr. Latif? Thank you for your perspective, having heard.
Mr. Chairman, this is Peter Trimarky.
Yes.
I, I think I tend to agree with Mr. Dolman. Uh, and the, the factor that kind of pushes me over the edge is the fact that um, if we are to vote against the, the. I'm sorry, the uh. The variance that it's going to incur, cause the applicant to incur pretty substantial cost to remove the fence. And restore whatever else, uh, the fourth of fence or something else. In light of the, the cost that would be imposed on the applicant if we were to move forward and. Uh, take this down, I think I'd prefer to hear the reasons why this fence needs to be there. I have not gone by and seen it, but. Um, I'm kind of inclined like Mr. Dolman to give him a strike and give him an opportunity to come back. We're gonna be here next week anyway. Or next month anyway. Um, so, yeah, I don't think there's any real harm to the board. Uh, unless there's not going to be any other applications next week, which would be rare.
Thank you, Mr. Trimarky. Thank you, Mr. Trimarky. Any other discussion? Anybody else wish to be heard?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, just quickly, it, it sounds like uh, again, it goes back to if anybody has questions. Why the fence is in the front and they need an answer, that's when we usually table it. So it sounds like uh, what Peter was saying is um, that he has some question about that. Thank you.
I, I'm also, I am concerned that if we were to render uh, a decision either way. The fact that the applicant wasn't here to waive his right to a seven-person. Board could become uh, grounds for a challenge. I'm not.
Well, I'll.
Not an attorney, but I'd just like to see if that is a concern.
Well, I'll defer to Ms. Finney on that.
I'm personally not concerned based on this record and based on the efforts that the planning department. Has made to contact this individual. This individual could have reached out. It's, I mean, I compare it kind of to a court case. You know, if a defendant just doesn't show up to court and there is no reason for it, then a bench warrant can be issued. If there's a reason for it, then usually it's adjourned. Um, here, the, the applicant didn't make an attempt to contact the building, planning department to. Request that it be moved and even with the planning department's efforts to try to contact the applicant, there's been no response. Typically in the past, as Chairperson Hope has indicated, there's sufficient information available in the packets, then this board can rule on the application as requested. The applicant does have, we've had it happen, and I think one, maybe two occasions. Where there has been a request to reopen for good cause shown, it does require a unanimous approval. However, I think that we could all agree, if there was a reasonable explanation for that, then that would be something that this board should. Heavily consider in making a determination as to whether to reopen it. Um, so there are options available to the applicant. But again, it really comes down to, I don't want to set a bad precedent of just saying, oh, they didn't show, so we're going to adjourn it. People don't show and we've ruled on them before. So if there's a reason to. Table it because there's information that this board needs in order to decide the case. Fair, but if that's not the case, it would be my recommendation for the board to hear.
Thank you.
Just legal advice, you don't have to take it, but that's.
Thank you, Ms. Finney.
Mr. Chairman, if the town attorney is, is uh. It doesn't believe that there's any concern procedurally about us being exposed to anything, then I don't personally feel any need to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, well, uh, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the floor to anybody that wishes to make a motion to table the matter. This would be the time that they do so. So is there a motion to table?
Um, John, can I just add one thing? We have communicated with the applicant in the past, not. I mean, Linda did all of her normal steps for the meeting, that's absolutely the case. He, he definitely disagrees with us that he needs an area variance because he feels like he filled the front of the fence so that it's four. I don't know if that matters or not. I had, I told Tom to call him and tell him that he can um, appeal the interpretation.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following what you're telling us.
Clarify, he disagreed with. The building department's decision that he needed an area variance, but he filled out the application.
Yeah, he did. And we followed all the normal steps to tell him of the meeting and actually he also received it in the mail, right? Cause we, he actually receives the notice in the mail just like all the neighbors.
So there's been efforts via phone, email and mail to notify him of tonight's.
Well, Laura, let me just. Property bordering Rosendale Road, correct?
Correct.
So what, I, 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 based upon your communications with the applicant. What is his argument that it's not a six-foot fence and it seems to be like a measurement issue?
Yeah, his argument is that they added dirt to the front of the fence and buried the, the lower two feet on one side. Um, but my building inspector and I both agree that it's still a six-foot fence and actually the dirt wasn't added to the other side. So, there's still, if you look at it from the point of view of the house, it's still six feet as well. They put dirt on it.
It's gone now, so those two feet are underground.
Correct.
But they didn't change the grading of the entire rest of the property.
They did not. And my building inspector and I reviewed it multiple times and felt that the six feet would stand. He did have that communication with us, though.
Okay, um, thank you for that additional information. Uh, I think that was uh, helpful. Um, Mr. Trimarky, do you wish to make a motion to table?
No, I'm, I'm persuaded by what I've heard both from you and uh, both from Laura and Council that um. There's no reason to, to wait on this.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, so moving to the substance of the application, I, I assume everybody's had an opportunity to review it. Um, is there any discussion on the application? Based upon the information that's provided, I would note that in the past, uh, we have two new members up here. This board has strictly interpreted the code with respect to six-foot fences, six-foot fences in the front yard. Um, are so, you know, I would say exceedingly rare, I can't, I can't. I can't think of uh, others. Uh, times in which we have approved the six-foot fence running uh, in the front of the property. Based upon my review of the, the diagram that was provided, it appears that the uh, six-foot fence is running. Uh, directly along the uh, road. I don't know how far off the road it is. Laura, do we know how far off it is? I assume it complies with the code with respect to it's setback far enough?
Well, that's why, I mean, we refer to the county anyway, but the county didn't tell us that it was. In their right of way. It's gotta be like on the property line because it's close, but the county did not object to it, so. Our assumption is that it's on the private property very close to the front property line.
And does it run along the entire length of the property?
Um, it runs basically, but it's a circular driveway here. It runs between the two um, driveway entrances. But it, it doesn't go here.
Okay.
Down here, it's not, it's between the two driveways.
Substantial length of the uh, substantial length of the property line, though, Laura?
Yeah.
Um, and.
This whole area is off.
And uh, I, I, I think it's obvious, but uh, this, they, they never applied for a, a building permit prior to constructing this, correct?
They did not. They were stop work ordered in the middle of construction um, and continued to build after the stop work arrived.
Okay. Um, is there, is there further discussion on this uh? Application? Does anybody want any additional clarification or wish to discuss the substance of the application any further?
Yeah, Mr. Hope, I'd just like to know how this came about to the attention of the town that somebody's building that fence and how long ago. Uh, is that fence been up?
Well, I, oops. Oops, I was driving to Colony and I drove past this and saw them building it. And um, yep, and I called my building inspector to go out and talk to them. Subsequent to that, though, there was multiple comments by many, many people in the town of Niskuna, because this is a very heavily trafficked route. So aside from me seeing it being constructed, um, I also received several complaints for it.
When, when was that, Laura?
Uh, I sent them out on. You think that's the actual day? It was probably in July. I, I think that there were m- multiple times that we went out, but the very first one was probably in July.
Okay, so, so just to clarify that since then, uh, you and the town. Been in touch with applicant and, and applicant has not uh, uh. Convinced, he's not convinced that he's uh, that his fence is six feet. Uh, and uh, he tried to uh, put some dirt on, uh, so to make it look like it's four feet. Is that what you said earlier?
Yeah, that's correct. So the building inspector, I think by the time he got out there, the fence was basically installed, but they were still putting the dirt on the bottom. He asked them not to do that and then they continued to still put the dirt against the fence, but according to our code. Um, it would still be a six-foot fence.
Alright, thank you, Laura.
Laura, I didn't catch the response letter. Was there an address?
Oh, yeah, they were on Partridge Run, so it was one-one-one Partridge Run.
There any further discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no one in the audience that wishes to be heard for against this application. Um, I will uh, make a motion relative to this application. I move to deny the application. Um, I uh, I, I'm cognizant of the substantial costs. That the applicant may incur in the removal of the uh, fence. Um, however, I don't necessarily think that that's germane to my analysis. Um, and typically, when I'm analyzing costs, I, I, I really look heavily at whether the difficulty was self-created. In this situation, the applicants had multiple opportunities um, to, to stop work in the middle of the uh, construction. Um, first, obviously, every member of the town has an uh, obligation to check. The town code to call the town before they go and start building something. Um, uh, like a, a fence in the front of their yard. Um, if they had a contractor, typically the contractor would have pointed that out, but even in the absence of any um, uh, professional help, they, they, they. They had an obligation to find that out for themselves. So because I believe that that. Um, factor weighs heavily against the application, um, the cost in- incurred by the applicant. Is, is, is less of a concern um, from my perspective. Um, whether the benefit can be uh, achieved by other feasible means, we heard that. Um, prior from the uh, the neighbor who submitted uh, a letter, um. We heard that the uh, there was uh, a mature line of conifers at this location that uh. Provided very similar type of uh, privacy protection for the applicant. Um, and they were removed in favor of the um, fence. Had the applicant contacted the town ahead of time. They may have found out about the, the restrictions on the placement of the fence and retained the conifers and thus. Um, retained some of the privacy that they apparently are looking for. Um, the town code uh, has expressed a preference against six-foot fences in the front. Of the um, property for the express purpose, again, uh, as the neighbor indicated, the aesthetic of the community. Um, prefers not to have six-foot fences running along the line, along the uh, major thoroughfares like Rosendale Road. In prominent parts of the community. Um, so uh, again, that, that factor again aggravates against the, the variance. The variance uh, that's being requested is substantial, um, and in the, in. In the circumstances that it's placed in a um, a well-trafficked route in the town that even increases. This, the, the substance and the size of the variance being requested, um, will the. Fence have adverse physical or environmental effects? Uh, I think that that's probably. The least of the um, factors that's aggravated by this uh, fence. However, the uh, neighbor did note that there were concerns relative to the trafficking of deer. Um, through these, these parcels and how that would impact their migration patterns. So I think that that is to a certain extent aggravated, although that, that in and of itself is probably not. Uh, a basis to deny the application, but taken together and weighing all of the factors, um, I believe that. Um, the variance should be denied. So that is my motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Kenny, is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Kenny, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Uh, I'm gonna vote yes and I'd just like to add that uh, it looks like the applicant uh. Uh, already was aware that uh, uh, only four feet it goes up in the front, but he still went against it. And uh, completely uh, claims that the town doesn't know uh, uh. Uh, there's stuff about uh, fences, uh, but our code does say no six feet in the front. Thank you.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Trimarky?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Halios?
Yes, for the reasons stated. I also like to add too, the applicant was issued a stop work order but continued to work on the project.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for the reasons stated and uh, just want to note, I echo the analysis of the chair.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for all the reasons uh, stated. So uh, that uh, disposes of that um, variance application. We have one more matter on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Kenny, we call the, that matter, please.
Appeal by Eric Dolman for a variance from section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna. As it applies to the property at fifteen sixty-eight Dean Street, Niskuna, New York. Located in the R-two medium-density residential zoning district to construct a two. Located in the R two medium density residential zoning district to construct a two hundred square foot. Three season addition partially within the front yard setback. The property is a corner lot as defined each street line shall be considered a front lot line. Thus, it has front yards along Dean Street and Salem Road. The interior line most nearly parallel to the rear of the property principal structure shall be deemed to be the rear. Lot line. The other interior line shall be deemed to be the sideline. Section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC requires a thirty foot minimum front yard setback. As proposed, the two hundred square foot addition will be located seven feet from the prop- front property line along Salem Road. Therefore, a twenty-three foot front yard setback variance is required. Thirteen notices were mailed, zero responses.
Um, we did receive a disclosure from the applicant that um. We didn't put in the packet, so I'll just read it so you guys can hear it. Um. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to section eight oh nine of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York. And chapter seventeen of the Code of the Town of Niskuna, I am informing you that I am an employee appointee of the town of Niskuna. I've been appointed by the town board as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. By disclosing my employment appointment with the town, I affirm that I am not using my position for any personal financial benefit. For myself, my outside employer or business, any member of my household, any customer or client. Any relative or any firm, corporation, association, partnership, or other organization in which I. Or any of my relatives serve as officer or director. Furthermore, I do not know of and have no reason to know of any personal financial benefit to be received by any member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Very truly yours, Eric Dolman.
Amen. Sir, Mr. Dolman, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh yes, Eric Dolman, fifteen sixty eight Dean Street.
Mrs. Dolman, uh I know you're a member of the board um and uh you you're familiar with the rules relative to. Um having a seven-member board. Uh now, we have a five-person board. Um and to hear your matter, I assume you want to move forward this evening.
I I would, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and just for the record, just uh just for clarification purposes, you haven't discussed this matter with any members of the board?
No.
No, okay. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your uh application?
Sure. Um as you can see from the uh plot plan that you have up there, I've. I've got a super funky shaped lot. Um I I don't know who drew these lot lines. That that person must have had a couple. Too many the day they did. Um. The uh what we're trying to do is add um. Sorry, we're trying to expand the size of our screened-in porch so that um, thank you. So that uh we can eat outside uh without having bugs. Um can't do that today. The existing screened-in porch is pretty darn small. Uh it's big enough for a couple of chairs and a coffee table, and that's about it. Um. I will point out that uh let me see if I can find, there we go. Uh that this isn't the road right here. This is a fence. Um that's along the property line. The road itself is way far out here. Uh in fact, we have uh we have a pretty big garden that's that's in place there. Um so ultimately, all I'm looking to do is take this. Uh screened-in porch that exists today and make it a bigger screened-in porch uh so that I can eat outside with the family. We've spoken to all of our neighbors um that, well. So we spoke with two thousand and nine Salem, who'd be the uh neighbor most directly affected. Uh they expressed only a requirement that we invite them over and provide appropriate wine. Uh I spoke with fifteen seventy-two Dean Street. Uh they expressed that they had no issue with it. Um I've spoken with all of the uh folks across Dean Street who would be able to see it. Um I was not able to speak to fifteen fifty-six Dean Street as that property is currently vacant.
So Mr. Dolman, with respect to fifteen fifty-six um Salem Street, uh it appears that they would. Is this the, is that the rear of their house facing Salem Street, fifteen fifty-six?
So fifteen fifty-six Dean Street faces Dean Street.
Okay.
Um and if you uh take a look at the map there, you can see there's a, there's a some pretty dense. Uh conifer growth there, so they they absolutely can see it, but. Um there's there's some screening there.
Okay, and how about how about on your property? Is there any screening on your property?
Uh we have uh some limelight hydrangeas in the garden that I mentioned previously. Uh they get to be six, eight feet tall. Uh we also have planted a magnolia tree. Uh along that fence. Uh that's, it's young, but it will not be young forever.
And how is the uh the roof of the new? Or enhanced uh three-season room gonna tie into your your main room?
In the exact same way that it does now uh with the existing one. Um with the existing screened-in porch. This actually, it it'll go to the uh dining room.
Okay, and I think you said that it's seven feet from the property line along Salem Road, but you you your position was that the.
Salem Road itself, the curb is significantly set back from there.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can see, so so this is this property line.
Sure.
And then right here is is where we have now planted a a pretty large perennial garden. Um and so this this is pretty decent distance here. I spoke with these neighbors, these neighbors. Uh all of these neighbors. Everyone's fine with it. I'm very fortunate that we have the type of uh neighborhood where we're all. Pretty close and we have group text going. We've all got kids the same age that running out of each other's yards, so. I've had the opportunity to speak with them at length.
And I understand that the current um porch, um it does not, it cannot accommodate you eating out there, correct?
Not even close.
All right, and it's three season, it's not, it's not gonna have heating in there?
So uh actually, we are actually scaling back from what was initially submitted here. It'll be the exact same footprint, but instead of a three-season room, it's gonna be a s- a a continue to be a screened-in porch.
Okay. Um are there other members of the board that have questions?
Oh, I I would add one thing because uh I I know there are members of the board who. Uh that we as a board have always taken this seriously. Currently, uh there is uh gutters on the screened-in porch. And the new uh screened-in porch would also have gutters that drain appropriately.
Where do they drain to?
Uh they they tie in with uh they tie in here and then go out into this general area.
Okay. Uh are there other members of the board that have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of question for Mr. Dolman. Uh, Mr. Dolman, is the a new Porsche will be on Salem Road or Street?
Uh it would be on the side of the house facing Salem Road, yeah.
Okay, and uh looks like to me, um I know you mentioned in the application that there are other people have Porsches and so on. I uh happened to be uh in the area a couple of days ago. And I see that your property, it is unique and corner lot, and it sticks out more than all of the. People on Salem Road.
Sure.
Uh so were you mentioning that people on that street have Porsches or were you in general?
Neighborhood in general, it when it referring to the character of the neighborhood. There's rambling additions all over the place throughout all of the neighborhood. Um but I don't think there's any other specifically Porsches that have required this variance. That I know of in the immediate vicinity.
Okay, so because that's why I've noticed your Porsche already uh sticks out from all the houses on Salem Road.
Sure.
As as it is. So how far was when you expand it?
Sure.
How far would that be the corner from the road to the new Porsche?
Uh so it would be.
Because I know you're asking for twenty-three feet uh uh front yard setback.
Yep, so it'll be, it'll be six or seven feet closer than it is now.
Six or seven uh closer to the road.
Literally every building, uh including the main structure, uh is a pre-existing non-conforming. Like the the none of the, this property would not exist uh if it if we were in current zoning laws. So it's only six or seven feet closer than it is currently.
So how far are is the existing Porsche right now from the road?
Uh I guess that, right?
About, about.
Uh it's about fifteen feet from the property line, so I'd say it's probably thirty or forty feet from the road itself.
Okay, so uh you're asking for twenty-three feet uh uh. Foot front yard setback variance?
Yes, yes, and currently it's it's at about fifteen feet, but I don't need the variance because it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, right, but.
So I'm asking for an additional seven feet, eight feet, whatever it is.
And uh, thank you, Mr. Dolman. Uh Laura, this question just for you. Uh for non-conforming uh properties, uh what is the allowance for? Uh setbacks, if you don't mind to remind me about that.
Um, well, for non-conforming properties, the setbacks is essentially what whatever was built prior to nineteen seventy-one. Um but if they're gonna add additions typically, that it is um half of the distance to the lot. Half of the existing setback or what the building is at, whichever is. Like less, right? So if your building is um, so a lot of the buildings in Niskuna are. Fifteen feet from this or like seven feet from the side lot line. If you wanted to put an addition on that, normally your side yard setback's fifteen feet. So your setback would be seven and a half, even though your building was actually seven feet, because you can't go less than half of the setback.
Okay, so so it added to this one. It is, I know it was non-conforming before nineteen seventy-one. When I drove by this property and it looks like that it's already sticking out. So if it was to be built today, would that be a legal uh Porsche sitting on the side of that road?
Um, n- no. So the the setbacks are actually on the drawing there. They're the, yeah, they're the little dotted lines there. Yeah.
And the only reason it is because of the non-conforming, otherwise it would not be in after nineteen seventy-one. Is that correct?
Right, this house is, it's in the nor- semi-northern part of Niskuna, so it was probably built in the nineteen twenties or thirties.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dolman.
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Dolman, just one other question. Um. Um I'm looking at the map here. Is there a stop sign at the intersection of Salem and Dean Street?
There is.
And um am I reading this correct that the stop sign would be farther toward Dean Street than?
If you wanna, I uh, yes, so I, there should be no concerns with sightlines when it comes to either the stop sign or the corner. It's definitely far enough away that it will not make those sorts of obstructions, so. Uh the sign, so remember, uh the sign's about here.
Yes, so it's beyond.
So the property, the that that property line and there's there's more grass, et cetera, there because it's within the setback. Uh so, yes, thank you. So the sign's here.
Thank you very much.
And then, yeah.
Are there any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no one in the audience, is there any one on the board who wishes to make a motion relative to this application? Okay, I will uh make a motion um to approve the requested variance. Um this is a unique property, um and I think that that uh guides the decision, my decision uh with respect to this. Um. The the benefit that the applicant is trying to achieve, which is a porch where he can sit with his family and have meals. Can't be achieved with the current size of the porch, and therefore there is an increase that's being sought. Um that increase i- is is reasonable. Um the location of the porch. Um in in a certain respect, uh being in a quote-unquote front yard uh would be unusual. However, this is a uh corner lot with two front yards, so it's not actually in the uh front yard uh of the structure. Um i- I don't believe that it's going to create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. As Mr. Dolman pointed out, this part of the community um has um many unusual lots, many narrow lots. Um and there are frequently um almost invariably variances that are required for any kind of improvements. To the um structures, I think, as a community. We want to uh encourage homeowners to continue to improve um their properties for the the benefit of the uh community. Uh Mr. Dolman has indicated that he believe, or he is gonna construct the um porch consistent with. Um his existing structure and honor um honor his his property in in that respect. So I don't think there'll be an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Is the variance itself uh substantial? Yes, I believe that the variance is substantial. Um given all the factors and the size of the variance and the 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 uh degree of the variance being sought. I don't think it would be reasonable to say that this is in a substantial variance. Will there be environmental or adverse environmental? Um or physical effects on the neighborhood? Uh I don't believe so, any kind of drainage issues. Um this property and this uh porch is gonna be far enough away from any other structures. That there would not be any um water issues relative to this property. Whether the difficulty is self-created, uh certainly, um this project could not be endeavored at all, at which point. Um there wouldn't be a need. Um however, um I think weighing the factors with respect to the uh self-creation of. Uh the difficulty, I think, given the uniqueness of the property, it's not uh entirely uh self-created by uh the applicant. So weighing those and balancing those factors, um I believe that the uh variance should be improved. And uh I move to uh approve the applicant's request. A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Sheketti, will you call?
Was that Trymarki?
No, that was by Mr. Daly.
Okay. Not used to voices. Okay, Mr. Latif?
Uh, this is uh gonna be a tough decision here. Uh I'm looking at uh this application. And uh the corner lot, usually most of the times is corner lot, we have difficulty with them. And this is the the most odd corner lot I've seen in a while. Uh it's a non-conforming uh lot, so they, to me, they already use the most out of the slot. And uh anything beyond what's there, it's gonna stick out. It's not gonna make that street look uh uh balanced the way I I see it. I I saw already the shed, uh the the screen uh uh showing on the street. And it covers a lot of the houses down the street. Uh is the various substantial? It is substantial. Is it self-created? It is self-created, unfortunately. Uh again, uh as uh. Uh I know the applicant will do good job building it and so on, but uh because of non-conforming, I'm gonna vote no, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trymarki?
I'm gonna vote yes. Um I live down the street from this property, walk by it every day and very familiar with it. Um based upon the dimensions that are shown in the plot plan submitted with the application and the description provided by the applicant. Um I frankly disagree with Mr. Latif. I don't think this, the addition of another hundred feet, a hundred square feet of this patio. Uh I'm sorry, the uh. Three-season porch or the porch is going to make that substantial difference. There is substantial landscaping in front of that, and there is some distance between. Uh the existing structure and where the new structure is going to be and Salem Drive, so I'll vote yes.
Mr. Halios?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. So uh your application's been approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, are there any other member, are there any other matters before the board this evening? Uh, any discussion? Laura, is there a uh, let's, let's say CLE, uh, uh, uh?
Oh.
Do you wanna, is that, is that coming, is that tomorrow?
It is on Friday, and I was able to get Eric a ticket today, and I'm gonna try and get Nick a ticket tomorrow. So if anybody's available this Friday, um, there's in-person training in Hudson Valley. It's very good. It's put on by the Capital District Regional Planning Commission, and um they do serve lunch, and I do pay. So you just have to tell uh me if you want me to try and get your ticket. I I'm hoping that I can still get them tomorrow, so I'll try.
No, I don't think you should personally pay. I know you, I know you're a diligent uh civil servant, but that seems uh above and beyond, but. Okay, um, so I, so I understand from what you're saying is that if anybody is interested in going on Friday, they should let you know by tomorrow morning at the latest. Okay, thank you. Uh, I I don't believe there's anything else. Uh, a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.